It's five o'clock, we're just going to wait for Jeff to come. Sorry. And sit at his spot. All right, thank you very much. We are the 20th of April 2015 and we have a regular town council meeting tonight. We will start our proceeding by us and council if we two offer our prayers. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, as we meet together this evening as a council for the community of Carstens, we're grateful for this community, we're grateful for all of who work and serve and make this community what it is. Pray that as we deliberate on the items on the agenda tonight, that we will be guided by Thy Spirit to you and have wisdom in the decisions that we make. We're grateful for this community, for all that we have, and these things we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome our delegations and welcome our financial department as well as our auditor and Channel 32, that is taping the proceeding, and Renee Seeborn, who is writing on behalf of Temple City Star. Thank you all for being here today. So we're going to turn the time, we're going to add up the agenda, I think is maybe the wisest thing to do.
I'm going to adopt the agenda for tonight's council meeting.
Okay, I would like to maybe add one item. Would that be all right?
Sure.
It's regarding the Alberta Crop Insurance Office that we had in town that is not closed.
Oh, the agriculture.
Yeah, do you have some... No? Okay, all right, so I will not put that on. So regular agenda as given, all in favor? Thank you. Calvin, you are here, this is Calvin Scott, our auditor with YPM, and we're glad that you could make it, and please go ahead.
Thank you for having me.
You're going to give us the audit for 2014.
Yes, so I've got it all ready. And I will give you a very, very brief version of what we just did with the Audit Committee. So we spent an hour going through this with management and the Audit Committee, and we went through in a very high level of detail. So I will do a very brief presentation for you, and there's probably a lot on the agenda, and we'll run through. I'll be happy to answer, but we'll link it about four or five pages for you of main highlights. So the first thing I will go through for you in these financial statements is just the independent auditors' report. In your package, there are going to be a bunch of stuff that we went through in the Audit Committee that won't care. So the first thing underneath the agenda is going to be the auditors' report. Page one is the independent auditors' report, and it states that the statements here that we're reviewing are the responsibility of management. So management puts these statements together, they create the numbers and the disclosures. Our job as auditors is to audit the information and ensure that it's in line with public sector accounting standards. And the opinion on here is an unqualified opinion, meaning that we do believe in fact that these statements are in line with public sector accounting. So it's a clean opinion, it's what you're looking for, it's beautiful, we have no concerns whatsoever.
Thank you.
Yes. So that's the good news. Not that there's any bad news, but that's the good news, is that it's a clean opinion, that it's what you want. The next statement is the management report, which simply states once again that these statements were prepared by management, that the town maintains internal control systems, that council is responsible for ensuring that management is doing their job and fulfilling their duties, and that you're reviewing financial information on a monthly basis. Then we get into the numbers. So the statement of financial position is going to be what the town looks like on one point in time. So as of December 31st, this is what the town's financial assets and liabilities are. This can change significantly from the day before to the day after, but as of this day, this is where the town stands. So the financial assets are essentially what's current assets owned by the town. So this is not going to be buildings or roads, this is pretty much everything else that you have. So as of December 31st, there is $742,000 of cash in the bank. This could have been spent the next day, but as of the day, there's that much there. So there was a surplus during the years that increased the cash at the end of the year. There's taxes and grants in place, taxes receivable, so those are up this year. From year to year, there's going to be some people that are paying late, or haven't yet paid, or disputing what their tax amounts might be, so this will vary each year. Those are always going to be considered collectible because the town has the ability to go collect those taxes at any point in time. Trade and other receivables are always going to be included, this is going to be grants, GST, any electricity from Inmax, it's going to be receivable. And that will vary depending on what projects or just the timing of the year. There'll be land held for resale, notes receivable relate to the black sands, and then investments, which are mainly bonds of about $2 million. So for current assets, as of December 31st, there's about $4.4 million. The liabilities are going to be what the town owes as of December 31st. And so accounts payable are going to be general operating amounts that obviously can vary from day to day on what bills are in. The employee benefits are going to be vacation payable as of December 31st. Deferred revenue is going to be any revenues that have been received, so they're externally restricted and they have yet to be spent. So this can be either capital or operating. So if a grant comes in and the project hasn't happened yet, those amounts sit as deferred revenue. So it's going to be for a specific purpose, but that purpose has yet to be fulfilled. And at the end of the year, there was $1.2 million sitting in that account. The long-term debt of $1.1 million is all going to come due or be completely paid off as of 2021, so those payments are underway, there was no new debt this year at all. And the obligation under capital lease is simply a book-off year lease, which will be done in 2016. So with total liabilities of nearly $3 million, this leaves you with net financial assets of about $1.5 million. What that says is if you had to pay all of your debts today, or as of that day, which is December 31st, you'd be left over with $1.5 million in cash, in theory. As of one day, that's where you'd be. The way we like to look at it too is included in that number is debt, which we know is going to be repaid over a period of time, which will be done by 2021. So if you were to add back long-term debt, which you know will be paid over a longer period, you'd be left with a net financial asset balance of about $2.5 million actually, a more realistic figure. That is a great place to be in. So that itself says that the town is in good financial shape from that point back in. Underneath that is non-financial assets. So there's prepaid expenses, in this case, there was a significant increase, there's about $175,000. Half of that's gravel and half of it's pit run, that was paid for before the end of the year, but you had yet to receive it, so it just shows the prepaid expense. The inventory for consumption is going to be your general inventory for public works, water and sewer, it doesn't change significantly from year to year. Intangible capital assets are going to be where all of your buildings, roads, all of the physical assets you own are going to be. So during the year, there was about $1.6 million of additions. There was about a half a million into the pool, there was some paving done, water lines, sewer, electrical upgrades, all goes in there as additions, as well as many vehicles that are purchased during the year. At the end of the day of December 31st, the town sits with an accumulated surplus of $46 million. Now, this amount is not cash available to spend tomorrow, this has already been invested for the most part, or has been put away for other purposes. So of that $46 million, there's going to be $43.5 million that has already been used to pay for capital assets, your roads, your buildings. There are $2 million of that that is put into reserves, so council has restricted portions of that already to pay for other events, operating and capital reserves that are going to come in the future. And there's also $1.1 million of unrestricted reserves in this point in time, so an unrestricted surplus. On the overall basis, this would say that the town is once again in very good financial shape. As of December 31st, you're doing wonderful. The next page is going to be the consolidated statement of operations. And as opposed to being a one day, which was the statement of financial position, this tells you what happened during the year. So it shows you the revenues and expenses. Ahead of time, I'll give you a warning that this statement needs more explanation, but we'll get to it at the bottom, because you're going to look at it and say, "We did not budget for a surplus of $375,000." And so I will explain that to you at the end, but bear with me till we get there. On an overall basis, the revenues were budgeted at $8.5 million for the year, and came in at about $8.3 million. Last year was $8.6. Last year's numbers were higher mainly because of insurance proceeds that would have come in during the year, so it's going to raise the income a lot. For the current year, government transfers coming in, so government grants that are received does vary each year, and even though it was budgeted at $765,000, it was down to about $696,000. So you're never 100% certain on what is going to come in for operating grants, and some of those still show up as externally deferred and unspent, so those can go into deferred revenue as well. On an overall basis, below budget for revenues, which is fine, there was also regular user fees that come in that would affect that as well as they vary. So $8.3 million of actual revenue for the year, operating revenue. The operating expenditures were budgeted for $9.4 and came in at $8.5 million, so it's good to be below budget on the expenditure side for sure. Included in this $8.5 million is about $1.8 million of amortizations, so it's a non-cash expense, which makes these numbers look a little bit larger in general. But the overall changes to the expenses, there was, again, there was a lot of pale damage repairs done in the prior year, which weren't done this year, so that's going to bring down those expenses significantly. Repairs and maintenance vary significantly from year to year, so if some oiling is done or road repairs in one year versus another, that's going to change each year depending on what budgets available, what timings available. So those are down this year. There was also a feasibility study done for waste management, which is a significant cost this year as opposed to last year. So on an overall basis, this shows that operating deficit, $219,000. But again, that includes some non-cash items in there. And that's why I was saying that these statements aren't necessarily a good representation of what actually happened, but that is where the statements show your operating deficit. Below that, the inclusion of $800,000 of government transfers for capital. So this is going to be MSI capital funds that come in, capital funds, capital assets purposes, which leaves you a surplus of $585,000 for these purposes. Now, the budget and the regular numbers that you would see on a monthly basis are done on a table basis. So what you normally see would include any payments for capital assets, which you made $1.16 during the year. You would also have transfers to and from reserves that are coming from this. So if there was additional revenues that would be moved into reserves, or additional funds from reserves coming in to fund those capital purchases, this does not show that. It also doesn't show the budgeted amount or the actual amount spent on the repayment of long-term debt. So if you were to take all of those other items and bring them into this statement, your budget would become a balanced budget once again, and you would see that you actually have a surplus of about $461,000. Now, that surplus is generally going to happen when certain projects that are budgeted for have yet to occur, and so it's not as though it's all free cash that's there, it's a matter of the funding's been received for a lot of operating purposes, and it just has yet to be done. A lot of those repairs and maintenance things are items like that, that if the timing happens in January instead of December, then automatically that surplus gets eaten up within the next year. On an overall basis, having the surplus and having that, it's a beautiful year for the town, it's in great financial shape. In general, we've reviewed in detail some indicators of financial condition, and all of the trends for the town are going in the right direction. You're improving significantly from year to year, so it's great to see a very healthy town. The remainder of the financial statements are notes to the financial statements, which are for the most part boilerplate from year to year. The significant balances which are included are obviously breakdowns of all the numbers in here, but we went through those in detail. It's the breakdown of the deferred revenue, what is in there, what reserve accounts are there. So I won't take you through all of those, as we've already gone through them in detail previously. And so it's very nice to see that this has happened.
Thank you very much, Calvin, and appreciate you bringing that very cheery note to our town. We had no doubt that our financial department had done a great job for us.
Yes.
And we want to thank our former CEO, and especially Noel and Hawken, for having done a superb job on behalf of our citizens and town and council. Thank you so much for all you did, and thank you for your presentation. Council, do you have questions, Calvin? No? All right.
They were done in the Audit Committee?
Right, and so...
Recommendation.
Counselor, are you ready to bring that recommendation forward from your Audit Committee?
You bet.
Okay, would you like to do so? Who is the chair of Counselor Edmonds? Go ahead.
I'll move acceptance of the 2014 audit as delivered.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And from our perspective, we'd also like to recognize management and the great job they did. You're lucky to have wonderful management in place that does such a good job, so.
Yeah, and I know that Jeff was also part of that budget, and so thank you very much, Jeff, now that you have your CEO hat, you will have the fun next year. We see all the kudos.
I just need you and Counselor Bangery to sign this, and then he can take the...
Thanks for coming, Calvin.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate what you did, thanks. Shake your hand. Job well done.
I tried to be as brief as possible. Appreciate it, yeah. I know you have a long agenda to get to, so we beat it to death already, so.
And thank your Audit Committee for doing a superb job.
I shall be. Yes.
I would like to... Bangery and Counselor Poyet, thank you so much for having done all the sessions with our auditors and...
She's got a bunch of...
Representing us all.
Looks where you're hoping, okay. In camera, on camera, adjournment.
Delbert, thank you if you want to go.
Yeah, it's coming up here one second. While that's getting ready, Hawken, just real quick, we'll have the reserves listing to go over a little bit later.
Do you want us to do that first? Would you mind if you give us a couple minutes?
No, I don't mind.
Okay, you can stay there, squared off, right? Okay.
If we could do that now while I have them here, if there's any questions to answer.
Yes, I think it's a very good, good point. In your package, you have a list of the...
Seven D.
Seven D, yeah, all the reserves. Now, the reserve is money that is set aside some for specific purposes, and you have the list of what's called restricted reserve, and so money is put forward towards projects that we have identified. And there is a certain amount of money every year from the budget that goes into an unrestricted pool, which gives a little bit of leeway to our finance department when they need to access some funding. So that is a listing. Do you have any question of the finance department regarding that list?
So I understand that it's just like for purchases of those items when the time comes, is that what that means? Or are they, is that amount of money that is being paid off?
Okay. No, not really. Noel, do you want to address that, or does Hawken want to address that?
Yeah. So that column is transfers from operating, so in 2015, sometimes there are accounts that we have budgeted to spend a certain amount on, and then the actual results were that we didn't spend all of it. And so what we do is we bring it into reserves, and then next week, we'll talk about it. We do then is we bring those items back into 2015 to fund operations, so some of them, not all of them, but some of them, yeah.
But that is money that's available if necessary.
Yeah, so really, simply, like, the way we look at it is we tax our residents for those... Taxed for.
Now, in the next budget, it represents a burden of tax.
Right.
So Hawken, are some of these just building up for the time, like, just for example, the Zamboni reserve, so we're not purchasing a Zamboni this year, but are you just building that up to the time that you will be purchasing that item? Is that the idea?
Yeah, not every item's the same, but for... We know that a Zamboni is something that we need to replace after a certain amount of time, and so it's, and that's, I think, over $40,000 to buy a new Zamboni, and so we don't want to be blindsided by that. And so each year, we try to decide a little bit to build up that fund, so.
So some of these others might be...
There are other things that are more of an operating nature, you know, like if we didn't spend everything that we had budgeted for on street materials, for example, then in the very next year, we'll bring that entire amount back in because it's operating, and so. It's more of a, some are more of a revolving item, whereas others are more of something that we build up for, for a specific purpose down the road.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Counselor, for these questions. Thank you, Hawken, for your answer. Saying no, I need a motion to approve the list of reserves as presented. Counselor Bangery?
I'll make that motion to approve the...
2014.
2014 reserves list, our budget.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you so much. I think you have all what you need to operate now.
Great.
Thank you. And Noel, thank you so much. I realize this is your very last audit. Thank you so much for all the fantastic work you've done for us in the finance department. You can live on a better note, the town is in good shape. Thank you.
She's bulletproof, she's a pervious.
She lives in two weeks.
Delbert, if you'd like to come, Delbert Mills will now present Manitapi Summer Youth Program.
Manitapi Summer Youth Program.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm not pronouncing it quite right.
You did, I guess.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Anyways, before I begin the PowerPoint, I'd just like to thank Mr. Jeff Shaw for opening doors with the reserve. And I have explained to Jeff that these issues that I want to create programs, they're... From, I just forget her name, but she was a...
Maryamira.
Yeah. We did discuss the possibility of having some kind of a program to alleviate the town, the people that hang around these streets on Main Street. And we are still pursuing, just to give you a heads up. It's a lot of work. Understand that I am in a different jurisdiction, we're federal, and that makes it so difficult to try and work with municipal communities. However, the intent of these programs is to develop a good working relationship, a positive relationship with the town of Carstens.
We very much appreciate that statement, thank you.
Because I did share with Jeff, we have to be in the real world and accept the fact that the reserve in that town are going to be side by side, living together till eternity or till whatever.
For a long time.
Yes. So what I would try is improve relations. One of the main things I would really like to do, because since we're in a town, I like to create a positive image for the town of Carstens. I like to create programs where the people on the streets will no longer hang around, because I do understand a lot of our people, some are with prescription drugs, so, and other issues. So my intent, and it's going to be a process, there's going to be challenges, however, we're hoping that things in the next year will change, and I think they will politically. And once those changes come about, I am sure we're going to start working with the town council. Because we want to improve that Moses Lake community, and the best thing to do is start with our young people.
I totally agree with you.
Yes.
Thank you.
So to begin with, last year, we had a program called Manitapi Youth, Summer Youth Program. It was in the town of Standoff. The intent of Aboriginal Affairs is to hire adolescents, because there's no programs on the reserve. Oh, no, what's going on?
No, you can go back. Chris, do you want to move into... Yeah.
So what we were hoping to do again this summer is to create summer youth employment, and for teenage youths, 13 to 14, because on the blood reserve, there is no programs for that age. That's why we see a lot of youths participating in inappropriate activities like graffiti, gangsterism, and all of that. To alleviate, we thought, well, we'll open some employment opportunities for them. And in this program, we focus on their work ethics, and we do have our own policies and procedures in relation to employment. The program will also focus on Blackfoot language, the culture, as well as workshops addressing alcohol, drugs, the gang activity, peer pressure, and so on. We do understand, and being involved, and I'm sorry I didn't introduce myself properly, I have a master's degree in education, I work with the Kynna Board of Education, I'm a consultant. I cannot teach because I got my master's from the University of Victoria, and I need an Alberta teaching certificate. And when I'm ready, I'll do that. But in the meantime, I'm just doing programs like this for the schools. And what I find is we could be blowing the face of this, we don't, there won't change. When we offer them an incentive, like say, "Okay, I want you to paint over your graffiti, the one you paint," you know, and actually... the one you paint, you know, and actually paying them the minimum wage. So it gives them incentive to do, you know, to improve and those 10 boys that were involved in gang, community violence and all that, we hired them. Today, the success rate is 98%. All of them, uh, all of them went to the high school except for one that didn't make it. Uh, oh yes, I suppose. Yeah, duration is an eight week program, like July and August, uh, and it's Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, of course, statutory holidays and, uh, as you, as you might know that we do have, uh, a holiday during our Sundance, uh, it's called UConn. So that's a day they don't, they don't work. Uh, our goals and objective is to give participants the opportunity to learn and to grow as well, experience the working world and to, to create contributing members of society, to create independent and healthy individuals. The target group, uh, Dutch kids, SABU, middle school principal, they'll be the, uh, people that, uh, will be working with, the associate, the counselors, and they'll be recommending these students. And I'm hoping 15 this year, but it depends on Aboriginal Affairs correspondent. Uh, so we'll, we'll see how much we would be able to, did I miss? Uh, no, this is, it's very short. So the intent here is to create partnerships. On the Blood Reserve, we are working closely with the Black Tribe Social Development with their reinvestment initiative program. And that's the program that funds this program. I'm sorry, for some reason, the budget didn't show up. However, I got hard copies, what I could do is I could make copies tomorrow and I'll leave it to Jeff. Jeff? Because I want you guys to read the full proposal. Uh, it's something like this and it states the budget. Budget wise, uh, reinvestment took care of the salaries. We had a manager which managed the program. Because of my background in, uh, addiction counseling and, uh, doing life skills, I got a diploma, I could do the workshops with these kids instead of dating people and paying them. No, we'll, we'll do that. And also, uh, uh, a field supervisor for this person will be directing the boys who are to work. I say boys, last year they were all boys. This year we're thinking of hiring girls. Uh, so I'm hoping, it depends really what they, but, uh, as of now, it's coexist, so to speak. Uh, I do understand there, see, what we're hoping to do is beautify Moses Lake. We're going to negotiate with the Black Tribe, uh, Housing Department to see what steps we need to take to tear down those burnt out houses. They're a nice sort of community. I want those down before, right away, before tourist season. Uh, also, uh, we want to pick up garbage. There's a lot of plastic, you know, garbage from the community. And the highlight thing about this, these kids come from homes that have alcoholism that we know they use prescription drugs. What we'll do is after we identify the kids and the parents, we're going to get the parents involved. Those workshops, we're going to have regarding prescription drug abuse and how it affects people in communities. The parents, it's mandatory, they have to be there, okay, to give support to the kids. The parents, of course, me, I'm going to give them, uh, an incentive. All of them are under social assistance, but under the social assistance policy, you're allowed to earn $200. So within, say, July, we'll have workshops, but every time they come, we're giving them $50, you know, as an incentive. We want to create cross-cultural kind of activities. I firmly support the town's ventures in promoting, like say, attracting the tourists. I firmly believe that we should, living across the street, we should be actively and proactively participating in Carstens affairs like the Heritage Days. These kids, I have the traditional dance. My recommendation, Eastern Heritage Days, part of our contribution to the fair, we'll have maybe a pancake breakfast and traditional dancing, like say, one o'clock, two o'clock, you know, during the fair by the, the Moses Lake Little Mall around there or any other area in town.
Delbert, can I ask you something?
Yes.
As you're talking about Heritage Day, we have the power in town that is a custom Canai power. And we always look for volunteer from the, uh, Blood Tribe or from the reserve to help us set up. We have some TP that will be set up. Is that a possibility for that group of, uh, youth to work with us?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Maybe Counselor Creed, who is in charge of the volunteer, will be the person that you would want to contact.
Exactly.
All right?
This is one of the things that we would like to pursue because, and also we want to have to make a flow by these, these kids. And also I do understand there's some university students that work with the town. Uh, I don't know the process, but I was thinking of working with those post-secondary to develop a mentorship program.
Yeah, I think Jeff is quite aware about that, hopefully trying to put together.
Yes. So I'll give you a hard copy tomorrow, but the intent of this address to the town council, I'm hoping is that we could try and work together. Uh, the coordinator for the Black Tribe Reinvestment Initiative is Vivin Whitequills and I could, we could meet with Jeff again before, you know, we have May and June to work. But what, the thing I would really request to the town is if we're going to develop partnerships, we could, I'm just requesting to the town, if there's a facility where we could work, uh, to do the workshops, to do the workshops.
The teaching though?
Yeah. And also for the kids to sign in, sign out, you know, that kind of stuff. You might think, okay, what's wrong with their facilities? Okay, for one, uh, and I did explain to Jeff, that gym is used as a funeral home. You know, there's wakes, funerals, and we could never tell when somebody's going to pass on, so I don't want my program to be disrupted. Also, the kids that, and we did interview some of them, you know, we did tell them, we're going to hire you, but we wanted to feed them. They don't want, a Dutch homeless shelter is a no-no. I don't know if the town knows, but years ago, there was a death in there and to our culture, there's spirits that we do not want to be, you know, near. So those two are out. The homeless shelter, we don't, because I, I do understand they're going to try and have it year round, so it will be used. Uh, the old church on this triangle, it's bought by Doreen Rabbit and we're trying to negotiate with her to see if we could use that facility. We want to, part of the project to, is to start a food bank. We know there's hunger. We know there's people starving. We know it. And we do have a food banking that is located in, uh, 20 miles away. A lot of people don't have vehicles and it takes a while to hitchhike and hitchhiking backward, such approaches, they know. So we're hoping to develop a food banking in Moses Lake and it's one of the projects. So I don't want to take too much of your time, however, um, I just re, I, I, I see, my vision, I see that it's going to be positive results and my intent is to develop good working relationship. Let's put aside this, our people always say, the Mormon people, uh, uh, you know, they're, they're different. You know, we need to educate our people, of course, that we need to work together. We have different views, different culture, but if other cultures can co-exist, I don't see why we can't. And I look forward to working with them.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think it brings us a lot of hope. And we, uh, will discuss this issue and if you can send that hard copy to Jeff or if you can forward it through, uh, via email, that would be fine. Administration can put you in contact with Counselor Creed regarding the power for 2015. Uh, I think there is possibly a lot of very good things that could come out of this program. Counselor Pivoy?
Just a question for you, Delbert.
Oh, yes.
Are you also interested in perhaps pursuing some partnerships with, say, the Chamber of Commerce or with the Historical Society? As, those are two examples, I think.
Anything will do.
Yeah.
Any kind of organization will do, see, uh, like I did explain jurisdictions, uh, we have a lot of violence in those communities. Uh, there's parents, you know, murders. There was a good program in Lake Beach. They dealt with community violence, you know, they had community watch, neighborhood watch, those kinds. I found a main person there to see if they could bring their services through. They said, no, sorry, you guys are federal, you have a responsibility of Indian Affairs, so you go through them. We don't, we can't. So these are the kind of things that I'm running into and maybe, I don't know if, I think you are aware of the Community Enhancement or Community Foundation?
Uh, the Lethbridge.
Community Foundation, yeah. Uh, that's 4.4 million that's available for Southern Alberta communities. I have contacted them. They want our leaders, our chief or committees to meet with them and that's in the process. So if we could, we have a program under the Aboriginal Affairs Social Development called Work Opportunities Program where the, well, the social assistance recipients, what they're eligible for assistance is in a lump, they put it in one big pot and they hire these people on welfare. To the understanding, there'll be a partnership, say, with another to put their resources together.
Okay. If you do an application to the Lethbridge Foundation for grant, we can surely help you with a letter of support.
Oh, that will be great.
So that is something, when the time is right, you could request.
Yeah.
And we could have that for you to put with your application. If we're going to partner in that project, it will be right, I think, from the town to show a letter of support. It's not money, but it's a letter of support.
Support, yes, I do understand.
Counselor Benry?
Delbert, this is a, probably a very touchy question.
Yes.
I, chief and council sometimes don't recognize programs if they're not held in Standoff. How do they support this program? You said it was very successful in Standoff last year. Will they support it, chief and council, if it's held in Moses Lake?
Definitely. I'm the type of person, since I have worked within Indian Affairs in the past, I know the system and I know their protocols. Prior to this initiative, we, I approached chief and council, uh, the social development and they welcomed it with open arms.
Good.
Because the, see, the thing is, they want us to move. Last year it was helping Standoff. This year they want it in Moses Lake, the program I had. And they want partnership and they suggested, why don't you open doors for Carstens? See, not all of our chief and council members are against, there are some in there that are very supportive. And the thing is, they gave us free rein. The reinvestment is actually a big part of money that has been collected for so many years. Uh, uh, how did it go? Uh, they, it, okay, for example, an individual was getting, uh, 300, say, a month for assistance, but they chopped that down to 228 dollars a month. That remaining was put in that pot and it grew all these years, so they call it reinvestment. So we're using that, uh, money to start this program. They pay my salary, my assistant and the 10 kids, their salary. And these boys, they don't work like, uh, we, and we're very careful, we went through child labor laws, we went through, that's why we have our own policies, procedures. Uh, we, we did research, so we clean legally, they're insured too, and we have a ban and it's insured too. So all that is taken care of, but they told us this reinvestment each year, do what everyone, but we want the youth's programs, preferably employment, so they could make a little money.
Okay, I just tried to, he just answered the question, he didn't know it. You know, he's just going to ask how many kids were involved, you said 10.
Ten.
Delbert, I just want to ask you something. You just touched an issue that to me is important. Uh, the question of insurance.
Yes.
So your children and your staff is insured. What we need to know, what we will need to know is when they're no longer on the reserve and come in town, is insurance valid if something were to happen in town?
In town.
We need to know that. Very important point.
I'll look into it and the insurance, I think they deal with any kind of Canadian insurance company.
You may want to check that out.
Yeah, I'll check it, definitely. Because we have to be very careful because one side is provincial, one side is.
Exactly. That's the issue.
Yeah. So that's why I think we can move ahead together.
Counselor Pivoy?
Just curious, Delbert, what does Manitapi mean?
Oh, Manitapi means young people.
Young people.
Oh, there we go. We learned something.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Delbert, for your presentation. Is there anything else you would like to add?
And if possible, uh, we would like to, you know, the university students that are in town, we like to get. we'd like to get them on board. Because what we want to do is, during our Sundays, we want to bring some non-native students up there to get their base painted. Just to show some of our cultural ways. And we're not very restricted now.
I really think that the best way to iron out those little details will be with Jeff. Because Jeff will have control over that summer falls. And I think that would be a good place to start.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation. And all the best to you.
Yeah, and I'll make sure I'll bring hard copies on to the mall.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right, Councilor, we can carry on with number five. We have two delegations coming at 6:30. So once we have those delegations, then we will adjourn at 7 o'clock for dinner. And after that, we will resume at 7:30.
Grant?
We will resume at 7:30 our meeting, okay? All right, so we are on five, the adoption of minutes. Now, the minutes had a couple typos that have been fixed. So if you detected the typos, they already have been fixed. So we just need to approve the minutes. As they are, that's minutes of April 14, 2015 meeting.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes of April 2014.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, number six, business arising. As you could recall, when we were a brand-new council, we were asked to look at the council CEO covenant and to sign that. I hope you read it all. I think it's quite informative. It tells you what your responsibilities are, mine included, and what the CEO duties and responsibility are, and how we don't tread on each other's feet without creating lots of pain, which many towns are experiencing, unfortunately. So Jeff, do you have that copy, paper copy for us to sign?
Yeah, it's downstairs. I'll bring it up when we adjourn for dinner. Before we leave tonight.
Thank you. So any question regarding that covenant? That covenant was drafted by George Kauf. When we had it last time, it was the original George Kauf copy. And it's very good, my point of view. Okay?
Do you need any kind of motion?
No, we don't. It's just an administration paper.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a comment on this CEO, the covenant?
Please go ahead.
It is very important, in the document that it reads, act as, that we don't make any commitments with, on behalf of the town or the town mayor council. And I think that's extremely important as we, as we work through our committee assignments, that we're very careful with our commitments to the committees, you know, that we don't impact the finance of the town.
I think it's...
What you're asking is that we don't promise anything to anybody. We're just saying we will take it back for discussion.
Exactly.
To the council and, yeah.
I think it's a very wise move. Thank you very much for that comment. Appreciate that.
Was that in here? I was looking for that.
Yeah, it is. Can you quote the exact reference, Councilor Benbri?
Yeah, it's right on the right of the very first of the covenant. And it's about six points down, I believe, refrain from making.
Yeah. Well, that's exactly what it is.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, thank you so much. So we will take care of this at dinnertime. Councilor Pivoy, you wanted to say something? No? You're okay? Fine. Okay, let's move to seven, request for decision. We now have a CEO appointed, and we're very glad of that. So what we need, we need three readings. This is by law number 16308, called CEO Appointment Amendment. There is a little change in there that has been inserted. It's very much of an administration issue, nothing to need a public hearing. So we can proceed with all the motions. First reading, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve first reading of bylaw 1630A, which is the CEO appointment.
Amendment.
Fire amendment.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Okay. I need motion.
I'm making a motion.
Second reading.
For a second reading for bylaw number 1630A regarding the appointment of a new CEO.
Okay, see amendment.
Amendments, yes.
All in favor? Thank you. I need...
I move that we authorize the third reading in the same day as first and second reading on this particular bylaw amendment.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Now I need the third reading.
I'll put the reading of bylaw 1630A, the amendment of the bylaw for CEO appointment.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you, Councilor. If you recall, when Mr. Kauf was here, he strongly told us that CEO description, but we never... Since we now have a very good description, 7E, bylaw enforcement basketball hoops. Now, this is a little bit of an interesting issue. As you know, our bylaw officer can only go according to our bylaw and enforce the bylaw the way it's written. Except that when citizens are reticent to accept the bylaws that we have in town, we then are faced with difficulties. So here is the question that is asked of council. How do you want the bylaw officer to deal with this? Or do you feel something different should be had as a bylaw in order to proceed and still have safety for children and for the people who drive and who walk around those areas? Where there are about three areas, I think, in town where we have difficulties. Three or four. Councilor Benbri?
Mayor, a few months ago, I proposed that we looked at our playground blocks of putting a cement pad in for the ability of a basketball hoop, which the kids could go there and play basketball. All like, well, who cares? I'm wondering if we should designate those areas and maybe possibly put one in the town square area around the tennis courts or somewhere around there.
Okay. I think that is something that Mr. Stewart is proposing, that we kind of create some pad for which hoop, be it hub court, full court. Essentially, hub court is probably much easier, and we could have more around the neighborhood. Jeff, can you tell us exactly where the lots, where the tot lots are, where we could possibly add something like that? Or the path where we could add those?
We've talked about this in the past. We were looking when we redid the east tot lot. Was that Third and Third?
Yes.
Yeah. We were looking at putting one there. Because there's space in almost all our tot lots. We have pretty, pretty big ground in each of them. So that's not too much of an issue. And I think it's something we could look at. We're going to get a little pushback from some of the communities. They don't want them. I know I've talked to some people in different areas that don't want them next door. Because people are there all night. Kids are there all night for playing in them. And they're worried about that. But I think the one thing we'd like some feedback from council tonight is, and this is such a difficult issue. We've got four or five what we would call permanent basketball hoops in the street. They don't move them off the street when they're down. They've been asked to. In a couple of cases, the RCMP have gone by and asked them to. Generally, the kids are really good about getting out of the way of traffic. Not always. I'll say there are a couple of exceptions where they're not. But it's one of those dilemmas that these kids are outside. They're not getting in trouble. They're at home. They're playing with their friends. And they're in a great place compared to a lot of alternatives.
Yes.
It's in many ways where you want them versus where we don't. And so we don't want to discourage that. But at the same time, we have people leaving basketball hoops out in the street that if you drove into them in the middle of the night, those people are liable, first of all. There'd be no questions, because it's certainly not insured vehicle on the street. You've placed an apparatus out in the street in front of your property that you own. So they have this high liability, which they must assume they have. But Lloyd has given letters to a number of these people last year. He hasn't wanted to start fining people. But that's the next piece, is that those people without letters last year received a fine for not removing the basketball hoops. And he doesn't want to do that. Because he recognizes that it's good that these kids are out playing. But at the same time, we have a clear violation of the bylaw. And we have a clear, that the residents have decided they will not comply.
Which is a problem. Because teaching that children are very poor citizenship.
I propose a kind of a solution. Maybe what we need to do with those who won't comply, we take our town crews there, and at 9:10, we'll remove that basketball hoop. And take it and confiscate it for a period of time. And they can't get it back until they come to a meeting. And we will explain to them the reasoning for it. And they will have to conform to the bylaw before they will get their hoops back. And they'll have to sign it off. They'll have to agree to that meeting. They need to know that it is a serious thing. But also, we need to be mindful. You're right, they are in a good place. Much better to have them near their homes playing than getting into trouble. But they still need to conform to that bylaw. It's still, they have to understand that they are a danger to other traffic coming through there. And somebody else could get hurt because of their neglect of that. That's just one idea.
Okay.
Jeff, is one of these areas Third and about 50th?
Third and Fifth.
West?
Oh, East, sorry. The city.
Third and Fifth. There's one, one that's been out, that's been given. So there's one in 3A called the... Third and First West?
Now, in that situation, in that situation, Jeff, there's that tot lot right on Third and, Third and Third.
East?
Just down the street from that spot.
Yeah. Now, is there a possibility of putting a pad in there with a basketball hoop on it?
There always is. There's also an assumption that it's going to stop.
And that's what I was...
I don't think putting in something at the tot lot is going to stop putting it. If it's in front of their house, they're playing with it. They're going to play with it in front of their house.
But they leave it out on the street. I've been past that one on the street. Now, we have some vacant lots up there that are right, right there. Is there, is there a possibility that, does the town own those, any of those lots?
Well, the risk of that, Councilor, is so what if that family moves or a new family moves in a different location whose kids play basketball? I don't know that it's reasonable to start putting pads in everywhere there's kids right now that play basketball. Because it becomes irrelevant in five years. All those locations are now relevant. I do agree that, I do support in principle putting basketball hoops in town square, in our tot lots. I think we need to look at that and enhancing, whether it's street hockey areas, you build some kind of, you know, basketball hoop that can also be a net and have that all available. I support all that, I do, in strategic locations. But chasing the offenders and then accommodating them right now, I think can be problematic in turn.
What I find difficult to understand is that parents support their children's actions and be disobedient to laws. That is very difficult to deal with from an enforcement point of view. If there were fine inflicted and removal of the haddis, the fine will not be paid or will be contested somewhere. We have much chance to win the case. But to go into a legal court would cost tremendous amount of money. And I don't ever know that we will solve the problem properly. So that is the issue that we have.
I kind of like Councilor Barnes' suggestion, although it might need to be put into the bylaw. I don't know that we have the...
That was just what I was going to comment on.
Or the ability in the bylaw to do that legally.
Well, we'd have to research that.
But, you know, if you could bring those, those families, like I say, to a meeting and explain to them. I don't know how hard those...
Not just the kids, it would have to be the parents.
Well, I think the parents, yeah. Because I don't know how hard it is to remove the hoops and standards off the street. They're just temporary. I mean, they're movable, aren't they? There's not, it's not like it's a big job.
They might have sand or something in them that weaken down or water. But they have wheels.
But they have wheels. They can be moved.
They could, you know, if they can easily be moved, you know, they should take the responsibility to be moving them.
We all moved our hockey net till we were playing street hockey.
Sure. You know, in the past, Councilor Billard had done an interesting program for all the tickets that he gave to people who were not following the rules on the road. He issued them a ticket and said you will have to pay it if you come to a meeting and get educated. And I'm thinking, maybe that's what we ought to do.
Well, that's what they do, the seatbelts. Issue a seatbelt ticket and then come to a movie and...
Come to understand why it's so dangerous.
Seatbelts are so important that you get the ticket.
And to have someone of the insurance industry to come and explain to them that they would lose a lot of money if somebody were to be seriously injured. It goes into sometime a million dollar of damages. They need to understand the really serious extent of someone being hurt.
How did, Mayor?
So that's an idea.
About eight years ago, we had a problem with skateboards on our sidewalks, Main Street. And I don't know.
We don't have it anywhere, I think?
Well, not really.
Not as much as we did.
Yeah, we had people getting literally run over with skateboards. They'd come out of our store and a skateboard would whip them past and knock them over. But we don't, how did we overcome that situation?
Games on cellphones, I think, is really that situation.
Okay. Essentially, Council, we need to give some direction to administration. Because honestly, that is an issue we need to do. Offer one type of idea. You offered some idea with building that. But it doesn't remove the fact that the parents prefer to see their children on the front of their nose. And I understand that too. Because it's less chance of getting the wrong prop mingling with their children.
Councilor Evans was ahead of that, that's true.
Oh, Councilor.
While we're talking about this sticking out onto the roadway, I have a problem with that truck.
No, can we keep with that issue?
Yes, but it's the same thing. If you're going to take these basketball hoops out the street, then that truck should be an illegal parking.
Okay. Let's deal with...
What truck are you talking about?
The one that's on Third Avenue, just stuck from the temple. And he doesn't park on the sidewalk. But it's a 22-foot-long truck. And it sticks out in the road. And at night, you don't see it until you're right on it. So if you're going to clean up your streets, I think you should clean up... So if you're gonna clean up your streets, I think you should clean up that at the same time.
Okay. So you're talking obstacle, whatever nature they are.
I, I, I think, I think my recommendation would be to Jeff to, to take a look at the legality of the bylaw enforcement officer removing the, the hoops or the hockey nets, whatever.
Confiscating.
Looks like. Confiscating them on a temporary basis and then having that meeting and see what the legality is of, of that. Because there's no point in us putting it into the bylaw.
Unless we know
Unless we know legally what we can do. But if we can do it legally, I think then I would recommend that we put something into the bylaw.
Well, councillor, you're, you're reading this right now.
Yeah, it's there.
It's what is there already.
It's in the bylaw.
We have seized a basketball hoop in the last year.
Then, then let's, then let's do it.
We can do it.
We need to do it. We just need to have a meeting, formulate some time of a, some type of a
The safety meeting.
Well, you have to remember, the safety meeting is gonna take somebody's time to conduct.
So we, but I, I think, I think the commitment we're making is, is that we don't want to see them not be able to do, to, to use it. When you're done using it, get it off the street.
Off the street.
I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
No, no.
And if it requires some enforcement from our part, it's gonna take somebody's time to enforce it.
My point of view is if we don't do something to curb the issue, if there was an accident, the town might become liable for not having enforced their own bylaw. And that might become an issue.
That's right.
And I bet you the town would be responsible.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think that's, I think that's the question we need to go on.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, any lawyer, a good lawyer would rub their hand very well on this case.
I have to support councillor Edmund's because today, I almost took a slide in off of a trailer, a fifth-wheel trailer that's parked on Third Avenue. And extension cord out there had all the slides out, parked on the wrong left to center. And I was just going up along my merry way and thinking I had lots of room to take it. And that slide was stuck out of the, probably the bedroom area. I just about nailed that, that slide. And so there's another situation. If, if we're gonna clean up the streets, we clean up the streets.
Okay.
Well, just
But councillor, let, let's stay with the hoop because if we mix everything, we're going to have issues.
Agreed. A couple of small things. Your trailer fits hook to a vehicle and the truck aren't insured. They're, they're sitting on this public street, but they're carrying insurance for life.
It wasn't hooked to a truck though.
So, if we're in the town and we'll take it immediately. Lloyd tickets dozens of trailers in the summer. Dozens and dozens. He's not popular for it.
The season is just starting. And so you're going to see some, and if you see some, please call, call our bylaw, the councillor.
Just a other question. Jeff, you, you indicated that a hoop had been seized during the past. I just wondered what, what, what was the, the story of the
Well, I, I don't know the whole story. I saw it sitting in front of the pound one day. And apparently, it was, if I understand the story, and I may not, it was a group of neighborhood kids that left it there, but it was in front of a different residence. And so Lloyd went and talked to that resident about the hoop. He says, it's not mine, get it out of here. So Lloyd put it in the truck and got it out of there.
Okay.
Because it belonged to some neighborhood kids who had pulled it down there.
Okay.
And so the resident, I think, was the one that might have phoned him.
Jeff, do you have enough guidance here?
So if I, what, what we may do is we may put a correspondence together for those same people that were written letters saying, councils advise us to confiscate the hoops that don't comply.
Yes.
And with that
Maybe confiscate is not the right word. Maybe just simply clear the road of obstacles that are allowed.
It is confiscating.
We're taking it that way.
And that we'll hold it until the, until they attend a meeting with
Yes.
Safety meeting.
To understand the rationale behind the bylaw or something. Or, or put something together. Or we set a date for said meeting.
Said meeting.
And we, before we confiscate anything, we just invite them all to attend. And if they don't, we'll confiscate basketball.
I think that's a good, there's an education portion and there's an enforcement portion. I think those two are quite complementary. Thank you. Okay. Do you need a, do you need a motion? Okay. The proposed letter to the Blood Tribe Re-Animal Control, by the way, Jeff, I was not able to get Three muscatia dogs that loved to cross the highway.
That's out of the neighborhood?
Come to town, frightened citizens, just about make lunch off their pooch. And then, when the bylaw officer is called, they know him, they smell it, they know the color of his truck. I don't know how they recognize him anyway. They say, no, it's him. And they make a beeline straight on that Blood Tribe on a reserve. And so that has been an issue for months and years. We now have on the front of us a proposed letter which would not be drafted that way. That's just ideas for the letter. To request from the council or from the police, we're not so sure who to send it, or send it to both. To see if they would be willing to help us with this matter and see their own dog bylaw enforced in Moses Lake. They have one bylaw. But it's not enforced. We're not so sure why, but we know that it's to us, there is an issue. So, administration needs, need to know if you are amicable or if you are in support of having a letter sent regarding that issue where we could work together with them to try to resolve that really frustrating point for citizens.
I think it's really important for us to have some communication on this issue. It's obvious that it's not something we're gonna be able to address on our own.
No.
I, you know, I've, I've been working guys chased down that road many times. And, like I said, dogs, they are famous. And without any cooperation from them, we're never gonna be able to fix the issue. So I think maybe we need to, we need to send a letter, we need to ask for some help.
Do you want to put your motion forward?
Sure, oh. Yeah, sure, I'd have to make a motion. I move that we send a letter to the Blood Tribe and if necessary, also to the other tribe police, or chief at council, asking for help regarding animal control specifically with the dogs.
I want to say, okay. Any questions? All included? Thank you. All right. FG is a request to invest our money from town by farmers of North America. Jeff may want to talk on this topic. It's interesting, but really, I don't think it's applicable to our town.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, so we deal with it very quickly. I wouldn't have put it on the agenda, but he, he specifically called to ask if he could come speak to council. And it's not my recommendation that it's something we get concerned with. We have good investments in investment vehicles approved by the MGA that are giving us adequate return. I think it's great maybe for the counties and those in that region to get behind. But he asked if I would ask, so I just, I brought up your consideration.
Jeff?
I was just wondering, you, you suggested that they approach the county.
Okay. But Hawken, Hawken spoke with them and said he thought it might be a good idea that if they went to the county, that county brings some farmers in and potential investors as well.
Yeah.
I was just curious, our current investment portfolio, I mean, we actually had this conversation in the audit committee. Our current investment portfolio is managed by Wood Gundy.
Wood Gundy.
I don't know when the last time we had a report, maybe from them on the state of our investments. We thought maybe that the audit committee discussed this, maybe having them on the agenda at some point to just come and give a quick report, recommendations or, you know, assure us and the public that everything's being managed well. But I'm guessing that our current investments are all pretty insured and protected. There's no money, no municipal money at risk, is that accurate?
There is one fund, there's, yeah, go ahead. I mean, you can
So the, the list of, of allowed investments is actually pretty, pretty small. But insured would be the wrong word to use. They're not insured investments. Most of them are in marketable securities which have no insurance value. So, no, they're not insured, but are they low-risk? Absolutely. I think we, I mean, I don't
Except for one that has a more
Yeah, it's still, I've looked at that one a few times and it's still, I mean, it fits under the MGA and they
Exactly right.
They don't allow much leeway. As far as getting a report from TIBs, from Wood Gundy, I, I think it'd be great if we, if you could get him down here with that, but for an account the size of ours, because they're a management of calories, whereas management of I, I don't see the not for, not for a lot.
What, what you would get if you need to know the exact value of the, what our portfolio is from, from quarter to quarter, you pretty well have it, you, you have it in your financial statement.
We were actually thinking that this would be kind of a Channel 32-covered, you know, investments, you know, report kind of
So what you're trying to say.
Just that.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Well,
I, I can ask
It doesn't hurt to ask.
The one thing unique about our investments is I don't wanna call them liquid, but we may have X amount one day and half of it the next day.
That's right.
Right, because they're just simply reserved until projects are done. So they move a lot. But I, why do I forget the name? Anyway, yeah, we can, we can have that. I can ask?
We'll be asked. So the other thing is maybe for a situation like this is we just have a policy, you know, kind of a, a general policy where it's explained that, I mean, unless your investment is not as protected as our current assets, that we probably, as council, we won't see you, you know, we won't have you come and propose something. I mean, if you have an offer where it's insured and more protected and the rate of return is higher, come and give us a presentation, I wanna hear about it, you know?
Their, their investments would fit in.
Wouldn't fit, yeah.
Right. We'd, we'd have to specifically ask for an exemption of it? I tore through it, looked at it.
You would have to pass
I'm just thinking it would, it would make it easier if we're ever approached in the future. We have a policy at Cardston, totally acceptable, yeah. Totally acceptable. If you meet these standards, boom, does yours? No? Thanks for, enjoy the private session.
So in other words, what you're really requesting is a policy that really states that we're following the MGA to the letter?
Well, it might be worth it.
Which we must do.
A municipal investment policy.
Okay, well, you know, there's nothing wrong with something like that, nothing wrong with that. Okay. Jeff, when you are done, could you maybe give us the Manitapi Summer Youth Program from your perspective, from a town perspective, and the discussion you, you had with Delbert? Can you help us a little bit as to how we can participate?
So, a, a lot of what Delbert is proposing, and he didn't touch on, it surprised me a little, he didn't touch on a lot of the ask that he's actually looking for. But I, I'll talk about that. I support in principle what Delbert is trying to do. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our community to extend a hand of ambassadorship, particularly between our summer staff and these youth. I think, I even like the demographics of 13 and 14-year-olds spending a little bit of time working with our college and university students and developing a bit of a rapport and understanding what it took for them to get to college and, and those kind of things. I, I see a lot of benefit of that. Obviously, I see a lot of benefit of these youth working to beautify the Moses Lake area and into bordering the Cardston area. That's all good. There's a couple of things I put in your background though that I wanna reiterate. And I, I've met with Mr. Mills probably three times, maybe four. And I always just, we have to end our conversations where I need to reiterate that I don't want this to become a town of Carson projects. It's not the intent. I don't wanna supervise those kids. I don't want my foreman to supervise those 10 kids. Nothing against the kids, I don't know who they are. I'm just saying, I don't think logistically, we want to take them on. Delbert's not proposing that, and so that's good. I think we can maintain that line, so that's a good thing. We need to make sure we're not accepting liability for them in some way.
Yes, that's why I
And that was brought up. And it can't interrupt our core work schedules. It needs to be on enough of a schedule and a scheduled basis that it's not surprising us at all that all of a sudden we need to find something for 10, 13-year-olds to do. I've known of this. You know, it, it has to be scheduled. And I think Mr. Mills is on side with all these points. Here's what I see as the involvement from the town potentially. That we schedule through the month of July and August. Now, remember, there's this only enabling program. Three or four combined joint work projects. Whether that's our kids in Moses Lake or those kids in Carson. We, we figure out and schedule three or four joint projects. We do a culminating project and what I would suggest it would be is that we do a, we send our staff with some equipment, with their kids and community members, and try and bring back usable condition softball diamond by the rec facility in Moses Lake. Randy and I have gone out there, it's got good shale, it's got some good things about it, it just needs some TLC. And I think a one-day project with a little lunch barbecue and something like that can be a really neat project. But of course, that's money and resources from the town to do that. I would, I would think it would be a good thing for some of our students, and we have seven of them, but some of them to spend that half day at the Sundance. I, I think that's, could be a good thing. I think we can offer them standard operating procedure and safety training during an orientation for those youth that they have. That's one thing that, that Delbert's asked is could we just give them a, a primer on, here's safe operation of a mower, here's safe operation of a weed whipper, you should wear eye protection, you should wear ear protection. You need to get all that. And because we already have that in place, we already have standard operating procedures for those activities. And then obviously, if there's a way we can use some of those or that we can benefit from having some of those kids come into the community for doing traditional dancing at a pancake breakfast like we talked about. Whether we can have a graffiti removal day or they all come in with our kids and they spend the whole day finding graffiti all over town. Those are all good things and I, and I think there's something here that can work. But we just have to make sure that it's scheduled and that the responsibility is well defined. I'm cautious about, the one thing that Mr. Mills brought up is wanting a facility for the kids to check in every day and where they would start their work day every day. I'll be very honest and very cautious about that being a shop. I have, between seasonal and full-time, what would I have in there in parks? I have 17 people coming and going in that yard in the morning in graders and backhoes and three-tons and tandems and pickups and mowers. And I'm not really crazy about having 10, 13-year-olds up there wandering around at the same time. I, that, that scares me a little bit. And again, it's no reflection on the kids, I don't know who they are, just generally, I'm not crazy about that idea. But I don't know where that location is. I know he really wants us to provide that and I don't have an answer for you what that appropriate location is. In my mind, it's the Minimo, it's the Moccasins flats. But that never seemed to be an option for him. And we've talked about it a number of times. Because it's central, they can store things there, you know, it would work. So I guess, I, I actually wouldn't have a problem if they needed a place for workshops once a week if they could use the green room downstairs and this room up here. That doesn't bother me, I don't see any reason why we can't make that work. If it's, you know, if they got 12, 15 people or something, that seems totally reasonable. So I'd like us to do something on some level. I don't wanna be the funder of it. I don't wanna be the catalyst, whether it's make or break. And thankfully, I've met with the reinvestment program people, they have, they are committed to provide the, the wage funding for those kids. So that's fine, that's all good. It has come up through our, our discussions about some money for supplies that they're worried they won't be able to get any, excuse me, supply money? They'll just get wage money? I'm cautious about being the funder of lawn mowers, weed whippers and safety equipment. And I, I'm not very on side with that, however. Do I think it'd be reasonable that if we did a graffiti removal day, of course, we supplied all the paint and brushes and gloves and of course, no, no problem there? I'm not even terribly opposed to having a little more that might go back out to Moses Lake to paint some houses. You know, that doesn't necessarily offend me either. So I think there's a happy medium there, we just have to put parameters on it.
Well, Jeff, I think you should carry on working Well, Jeff, I think you should carry on working with Mr. Mills and come to that agreement. I think that would be probably.
Were you going to go specific direction from counsel?
Well, what I would like is on some of those items, so let's take supplies, for example.
I think that would be.
And I know there's some trade offs, there's back and forth. So let's say hypothetically, we do not put up a facility, we don't, they've figured it out. So we coordinate maybe three work projects in town over the summer, joint work projects. We do a day of work on the softball diamond out there at the end of the season. We send, say, three or four kids half day to the Sundance. I mean, these are all out of pocket expenses for the town, there's labor attached that. An hour when they first start, we'll send Randy out to do a safety orientation and equipment orientation for an hour or so. All these things I'm on side, the one thing I'm just questioning is do we want to, do we want to load up a, let's say, just because I'm familiar, a home hardware gift card with X amount of dollars that they can use to buy gloves, buy paintbrushes and rollers? And we're not, do we want to put a lot of parameters on that? I'm just curious if we want to help that way at all? And I don't know, that's where I start to get a little less comfortable.
My preference would be for us to supply supplies rather than loading up a gift card and head to go.
Right, right.
So I would, I would feel more comfortable.
So if we just got a list of here's some things we need and we're comfortable up to this dollar?
There is, there is something else. If those, those kids are going to work in town, we have a donation policy that would allow us to support people who are doing work for the town, on the town property.
And to be honest, Mary.
Is that something that we could use?
If they're doing work on our behalf, we'll just buy the materials. It just comes out of parks and materials.
No matter where it comes from, it's no different.
Yeah.
Okay, I just thought it might be if we need to look at that.
I, I think there's a huge potential with this program for private involvement. You know, I mean, I appreciate that they've come to the town, but I think that, I mean, I'm just listening to some of the things that, I mean, improving the businesses of Main Street, that sounds like a Chamber of Commerce partnership, you know? And even improving, you know, the appeal and the look of Moses Lake for the purposes of tourism. Again, that's something the Chamber of Commerce, I'm sure, would be very interested in partnering with. And I know there's other organizations, I can name a couple, who would be happy to find volunteers to work side by side with these kids on any given days. And I think that there's, I'm just throwing out a name here, but Naomi Peterson, I'm sure, would love to sit down with, is it Delbert? Yeah, with Delbert, and put together a program and say, hey, what are you doing this day, what are you doing that day? I'll get 10, 10 accompanying youth, we'll turn your 10 into 20 and we'll go do it. And, you know, these 10 won't be compensated, but it might rotate, you know what I'm saying? And I just think there's such a huge possibility for private partnership here and private money. I think that there are service clubs and things that could be approached to find funding for, you know, gloves and paint and things like that. I don't think that we as the town should necessarily take that forward. However, you know, looking at if they need a facility, maybe there's a private business that they could check in at, et cetera. So I mean, I just, I would hate to see it be them plus the town, you know, and that's it. I'd love to see, you know, a couple of people say, come on in, let's sit down with Delbert, let's form some partnerships, and let's really take this. I mean, I know like Paula Brown or Stacy Allen or something, they could, they could really form some partnerships here, they could do some good.
The whole idea there too was to create that overall relationship with the town as a whole. This was approaching the town first. And if you remember, we had written a letter long time ago when we had that $5,000 and we did not know if it was going to go toward the power. We had suggested that if they had some social program or something like that, we would love to partner with them. So I think that was the opening that was created at that time. And I took that opportunity to approach us. And he kind of referred about that, he asked Chief and Council. And I think Chief and Council had received the letter and said, you know, I think that would be open for partnership. So, but I think your idea of this also has a lot of merit. The more people we can contact, the better it will be. I'm sure Jeff is taking note and will be able to share that with, with Delbert. And to be.
Counselor Ben, you do it from this.
No matter what I was saying, to, to help us with the volunteer, the power, that would be a big thing because that's exactly what we were looking for. Okay, Counselor Ben.
We talk about the incentive and that's creating up that ballpark out there. Why don't we want to do that at the end of the season? I mean, if the ball diamond is, the playing of the ball is over with. I'm saying, hey.
Give that right away.
Give it, do it right away and let the people of Moses Lake see what we're willing to trade off right now. And enhance that ballpark so they can use it and they can say, hey, look, you kids, you know, we're out here doing this ballpark. Man, that gets behind this program.
Don't be shy, come on up.
Essentially, they wanted to have their kids their passion. That was a whole, that was a whole point. It was for them to see what the better work in the right direction can do to improve the community. You're right, the timing is not perfect.
But that's the same token there, if they have no. They might ask for some of our top people.
Anyway, that's something that has to be part of the discussion. We have all the aviation and we're so happy to see so many of you. It's a very special day. We have Paula Brown and we have Alana Levitt and I have brought some friends and family. And we are really thrilled to have you all. You probably know most of us, if you don't know us, do you need us to introduce ourselves? No? All right, we're good. So we are there to celebrate today, and in order to celebrate, I will ask Paula to come first. Please, come on over here. Paula, it's so good to see you. And it's a very happy day for us as council to be able to recognize you for your achievement. And I'm going to give a little bit of what Paula has done because we are on video, so like this, you will be able to see yourself on YouTube. Paula is a very strong giving and a very strong giving volunteer for all residents of Cardston. I've seen your name involved in so many things. And so let me tell you a little bit of her accomplishments. First of all, she contributes greatly to the swimming club and to the soccer club. That is a mom that is dedicated. She also does an awful lot with organizing the club schedule. She coaches, she fundraises, and she's always there when it's time to register all the participants. She'd miss anything, probably. Football too, you see. Graham, where are you? You didn't put it there.
That was kind of new.
Oh, there you go. But all our efforts are there to promote healthy and active living, which is a goal of the town. So over the past year, Paula and the swim club have engaged in a lot of fundraising efforts to get the new swimming pool and the water slides up and running. It took many hours with all your group to fundraise for those water slides. Thank you so much. So efforts for our community are very much appreciated. And because of all our accomplishments this past year, we're able to recognize Paula with the Citizen of the Year award. And so it's my pleasure as mayor of this town to present you with this plaque and thank you so much. Thank you so much. And Paula, you can carry on being a volunteer because. No, no, no.
That was on camera.
There is one more award, you know, after that one. So we'd love to have Alana come, if you don't mind. Alana Levitt is another very, very special lady in our town, we love her greatly. One is very involved in sports, this one is very involved in the arts. So I know that Levitt has managed a Curious House Theater for years, do you know how many? It's a long thing. I thought you would say that. And with her buoyant enthusiasm and encouragement, many actors, both young and old, have followed that dream. And she taught them to be courageous and to develop their talents. I've seen you at work. The Curious House Theater is one of the many gems of Cardston that brings tourism and recognition to our town on fine white. Very often you go to Little Bridge and you will hear in Costco, people will say, oh, you're from Cardston? Oh, we went to the theater, you have so many good shows. And I agree. And I always think, this one is behind it because she writes all the lyrics. This past year, she led the charge to bring the theater into the 21st century by installing a digital projection system. And Alana, I don't know how you did it, but you had a world, world fundraising for the theater and you managed to get the whole town behind the project, which was wonderful. And you finished fundraising in record time. It was great. Alana cares for those who want to develop their talents in the theater. She brings people who need a home into the theater. That is the person who submitted your name for that award, that's her very word. She fostered their talents. And she said, many who spend their days inside the theater world count her as a second model. For her years of dedicated and personal service, we are pleased to present Alana with the Lifetime Citizen Achievement Award.
It feels really old. I said, this is for older people.
Thank you so much. It's always a good job to have a council by your side. We also like to really recognize the committee that has redesigned the achievement award this year. They really took time to really think this one over. And I especially want to thank Graham, Graham, come on, smile. For his great efforts, when he submitted the new revision of the Citizen Award, I thought, oh, what a fresh look. That is to recognize those who have done many things for years and those who have put a great emphasis in a special year with many different services for the town. So there is also a Youth Award, but this year we didn't receive any submission. It's so new, the youth is probably scratching their head, and so what do we have to offer? They have lots to offer, and we hope next year to be able to have a youth represented there. Thank you so much. So, it's a little early, thank you all for coming.
We're ready.
We are ready? All right, so we are going to adjourn, and then we're all going to go down and go to the senior center and enjoy dinner together. Thank you, all in favor? Thank you. And the media can come with us if you want to come across, they're fine.
So you can go out the store or down those and through the back and you can do.
We are trying to, Counselor, we're trying to come back if it will happen now, but you can stay and enjoy the evening as long as you can do your best.